President.
Mr. Beard.
Steve Moore is here. All right, please rags to the plaid.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move on to public comment. First, I have Ms. Burigno.
I'm going to take two, because I know you have a lot to do tonight in this last week's meeting, but I wanted to share some thoughts. Newport is in trouble. We have open teaching positions. We have fire, we need firefighters. Public Works Department needs help. Every major business in town has help wanted signs out. It's not easy to recruit workers to Sullivan County. If you want a glamorous nightlife, Newport is not the town for you. But if you want a town steeped in history, rich in culture and recreation, with a small-town feel and a strong community, you cannot choose a better hometown than Newport. We are, but right now, we are not doing a very good job. We are not putting our best foot forward. Whether it is the school board meetings, the select board meetings, on the radio, on podcasts, on TV, in the newspaper, or on WhatsApp, we are not doing a good job marketing what is best about Newport. We want caring, committed teachers educating our children, well-trained firefighters ready when we have an emergency, a fully-staffed Public Works Department able to manage record rainfall or records of snowfall. We must all do a better job demonstrating what a truly wonderful place Newport can be. It is time for everyone in our little town to once again demonstrate our ability to solve problems when we come together, to once again show that strong sense of community for which Newport is so famous, to find the strength previous generations showed when they created our special place. It is time, once again, to put the sunshine back in Sunshine Town, both figuratively and literally.
Next, I have Angie. Is it Baloo?
Claudia.
Bolio, sorry.
My name is Angie Bolio. I'm a Croydon School Board member. I am reading a letter written by our Board Chair on behalf of the entire Croydon School Board. I would like to be surprised and disappointed felt upon hearing your decision to terminate our contract so suddenly and without warning. Surprised because at our last public meeting, we had mutually agreed to meet and discuss other ways of structuring the contract. We would have happily discussed any of your concerns. Disappointed because of the suddenness of your decision will be highly disruptive to our students' education. A longer notice period would be more reasonable and give us the opportunity to make alternative arrangements heading into the fast approaching school year. On behalf of the Croydon School Board and our administration, we ask that you allow us to extend the existing contract through June of 2024, effectively giving us a one-year notice of termination, which we would feel, which we feel would be better for our students and in keeping with this here, our original agreement. Thank you.
Anybody else that wanted to talk, then you're a chance to sign up. All right. Next, we'll move on to review and approve the minutes of June 22nd, our school board meeting.
You're for the voting.
Oh, that one's good. So you moved to a third one. Question. Public minutes. Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Approve the public minutes. And we have the non-public minutes. Some second. Well, the reason why we're having this is we have to correct a portion of these minutes of the non-public, something along the lines of that.
All right, then you're asking us to do the amendment first before we move. Do you want to take a second on?
Yep.
I want to take my motion on and move to, to change the non-public minutes to eliminate the ceiling of the minutes.
So I have a motion to approve the non-public and rescind the motion to Sill. That's a second.
Sorry.
All right, any discussion?
We just want to tell them, do you want to talk?
I will correct Mr. Jones's spelling of his. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
Was this meeting 2022 or was it 2023?
Yeah, and change it to 23.
And we'll amend the date correctly, Mr. Jones's name, and we will...
Correct. Thank you.
Rescind the motion to Sill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes, 4-0. All right, which brings us to our next subject, which is to ratify the vote on the Croydon tuition agreement.
I'm not voting for school board to terminate the Croydon tuition agreement. Second.
Discussion?
It's basically done this because we forgot to come out of non-public last week. Do this vote publicly, we did it non-publicly, and non-public, and this is whatever evidence gave you.
Yes. We erroneously took the vote during non-public. We should have taken it outside when we came out of non-public. Anything else?
Second.
All right, so do we have, you made the motion?
Yeah.
To ratify it. Second of it, first. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right, motion passes. I appreciate the Croydon School Board coming out. We weren't really prepared to discuss this. I know that from speaking to the superintendent, we're going to be open and it'll be to work with Croydon to ensure that we continue moving forward, but the three-year contract ended at the end of this school year, and this would have put us in a year-to-year. And so we just want to get our contract with y'all in line with the other schools that we have contracts with. So that's the reasoning behind the termination of the contract. Yes, ma'am.
Why would you wait until three days before the contract expires to let us know that you weren't going to renew?
Well, I know that that's not preferable. I mean, I understand and I get that. I don't really know what I can say.
I think that I spoke, I spoke with Frank the day after that we voted, so the 20th there is when I spoke.
But your letter came when?
It would have, that evening, because I wanted to talk to him in person and then, then send the letter, because I think I spoke with him. I don't remember what day, what day I spoke with him.
It was just a couple of days ago, it's like two days ago.
Yeah.
Because I knew we were playing phone tag.
Yeah, it was about two days ago. I got a text that he needed to call you. It took us a day to get in contact on the phone.
I know that it's not ideal, but...
Less than ideal, actually.
Yes, it's less than ideal, especially from your perspective, but from our perspective, that helps us to shore up our contracts so that they're all in line with all of our other schools we have contracts with.
That makes sense to me. What doesn't make sense to me is not extending a one-year contract and then meeting with us, as was agreed upon at the last meeting that we attended, to discuss the contract and iron out any issues that you might have, instead of just pulling the rug out from under us. That's what doesn't make sense to me.
Does it? Yes, Mrs. Moore.
Are you missing or are we missing something here where you can come back with a one-year agreement?
Um, he...
We had the three, the three-year agreement ended.
Right, and then it rolls into a year-to-year contract.
If in fact the parties agree. So now, if you didn't want to agree at this particular point, you withdrew, that would be our notice.
It actually says in the contract, a year warning, a year notice if we're not going to renew, so...
The three-year contract had bookends.
I understand that.
We were at the bookend. The one-year...
From my understanding of the contract, it's that that is during the three-year portion, you get a one-year notice.
Okay.
And then once that three years is up...
So in the third year, you get a three-day notice.
Just, just so, just so you know, on May 30th, I reached out, excuse me, May 29th, I did reach out to Frank regarding setting up a meeting for us to meet.
Right, that was regarding the conversation?
That was regarding the contract. I said, do you have a date in mind that we can get together for meeting regarding the tuition cost and stuff? And so you said that you were going to check with Aaron to see if he's ready. And then, and I just said, on the 30th, I said, sounds like a plan, please reach out to me again so we can secure a few dates, and that was the last event, and that was May 30th.
Yes, that, that was in relation to our agreement, you come together to talk about any changes that might need to be made and...
To the contract.
And to look at how we compute tuition, as we agreed here jointly. It wasn't about this. This is totally separate from that. That was about making adjustments as we needed in the existing contract and continuing to move forward.
I didn't understand it. I didn't understand it as that...
That's what's a surprise to me, because at that meeting, it was very collegial and it was open to having conversations about what your issues might be, if we had issues, but mostly it was about figuring out how we were going to take a look at if we should or shouldn't adjust the formulas on tuition. And nothing about ending the contract was mentioned that night, nothing was mentioned about moving forward on a one-year basis with notice. So that's why this is such a surprise, and your texts around that were about getting a date at that committee, because you and, I forget who was going to make it.
Me and Jenna.
Who was going to be on that, the four of us were going to get together with our VAs and start to have some conversations, and that, this bypasses all of that. And that's why it's such a shock and a surprise and seemingly difficult, what you said some word to describe it.
I understand that. My perception from our meeting that night was that we were going to get together to figure out a new contract. I didn't realize that from your perspective, you thought it was to fix this year. I must have misheard something. I know, I've only been doing this for, what, 16 months now, so if that's on me for missing, then I apologize for that, but we really have to discuss them with, with the board need to restructure our contract.
Sure, so let's step back, let's step back to where we were at that meeting and begin those conversations.
We can, but not with the contract that we have right now. So like, I mean, it is what it is, and I know it sounds harsh, but you were on the other side and you had secured a school different than us for this, that we could be in the same boat. Like, if you found a different school, for instance, to, to contract with?
That, that wouldn't affect this, our contract here at all. I used to be superintendent in Cornish, and Cornish separated from Claremont. We established three schools of record to use. None of that has affected one or the other. They are just simply separate contracts. We speak and talk with all of our districts every year about contracts and adjustments and changes. And that, you know, that's, that's a normal procedure. We tried to improve our procedure with you folks by making sure we had our joint meeting to see if there were issues that we needed to talk about and discuss, but what we do with contracts to other schools doesn't affect our relationship with Newport or our contract in Newport, or should.
So part of it was if we didn't terminate the contract before the end of the three years, it rolls over automatically, so then that contract for next year is not negotiable, it is locked in as it is. This board decided that we don't want to be locked in as it is, thus the reason for, we've said that we'll discuss, you know, a contract or whatever with Croydon going forward. This is a very personal thing for me, because I was a Croydon student, I was in Croydon and I came to Newport. And so, I mean, I can't talk about our non-public, but for me personally, I was like, hey, you know, it's important for me that we have something here, like me personally, one board member, because I was a Croydon student, but we just jointly decided that changes need to be made, and with it, if it went to July 1st, now the contract rolls over and it automatically goes for another year, so there's no altering the contract at that point until 2025.
So I think what we were just, the only thing I think, I'm reading Aaron's letter correctly and interpreting correctly, all he's really saying is he respects the right, that board respects the right to, for you to cancel and to end the contract, but to at least abide by the intent, and I know there's a legal argument about what those words mean in section Article 2 or whatever about the years' notice, but the intent of that, I think all who were around at the time that was originally done, which is probably seven, eight years ago now, was that if either party decided to make a change and to leave the agreement that we would give a year's notice so that the other party would be able to be making, make adjustments. For example, it would allow you to make revenue adjustments because it affects your revenue. It would allow us to make educational adjustments because it affects our students, and actually it can be quite traumatic to a family all of a sudden to know that what they thought they had, they no longer have. So, yeah, so it's a big surprise that way. So I think the request really is fine if you'd like to end the agreement. Let's continue this year as the notice year, and if we want to work on a new agreement that is, found in a suggestion to be more similar to Goshen, let's engage in that and let's do that. But let's not totally pull the rug out right now on these families. Let's give them a year to make that adjustment. You totally have the right to pull out of the agreement. Nobody's going to argue that.
This was a new joint contract, new. I can see a long negotiation, but renew an existing contract after it matures, the changes to it should not be significant and should take very little time. The contract does not require, the three-year does not require the period that you're looking for in order to make a decision. If in fact we were not taking this action and we said we want to renew it, what would be the expectation that would take a year for us to make a decision? I don't think so. The decision that we had made at the end of the three-year was made by the contract itself in not authorizing the one-year and having an end point. So it was up to all of us, both boards, to decide somewhere sooner than the end rather to continue or not, but not a year.
So why, why mustn't that brought up at our joint meeting if that was the concern? That, that was only a few weeks ago. We could have, you know, made it more of a priority. I mean, our, it was not on the top of our list as everybody was graduating students and ending the school year. We assumed that we would be having these meetings over the summer and then to next year to work out any issues that existed. So I don't, I just don't understand it. This doesn't make sense.
As, as a board member for myself, I will say, sometimes information comes to you late in the process, and you have to act, and we do.
Did you have to act, or could you give us a year?
Just to discuss the information.
Can you hand her a handout?
No, I couldn't.
Farrell, would you?
Being as I'm so new to the school board here, I'm not quite sure where, if I negotiated one of my industrial contracts, I know where I would go. And I'd suggest that the information we discussed in closed session come out in another closed session, including Croydon, and we start hammering it out from that standpoint.
I was gonna say, something tonight's meeting was wrong because last meeting, we didn't do this publicly. It was just an error on our part, and so we were just fixing that error. Thus, we weren't prepared to discuss this period, and had we not made that mistake, this opportunity would have came up, it would have been next meeting. So, you know, I don't know what the agenda is for next meeting and what, when we discuss this, maybe next meeting, this is on there, I don't know. But certainly we didn't do anything different tonight than what we just did, because the only purpose of this meeting was for to fix what our four board decided, I know Jenna's not here, but, and obviously, we're still willing to discuss the Croydon. I just don't, I get it from your perspective, trust me, like, I do. I get it. I get your set of things, and I don't think in any of our conversation with non-public or public or whatever, that we were like, hey, you know, we're just not gonna, we don't want Croydon kids anymore, and none of this ever came out. So I think we just need to get together our boards again, or however we're going to do it, to work on a new contract. And just, you know, we've got two months, period, whatever, but see what we can do to fix our contract.
Yeah, I mean, I know, nothing that I'm going to say is going to make you all at dear, you know, dear media or anything, but just like Mr. Beard said, our goal is to, we just have to restructure the contract. I can't say it out here in public, the reason why that is because we did it non-public, like the, like, I don't know, I just, I can't say it, other than that. So without being able to, to have that private conversation, the way that we have to go is to try to renegotiate a contract that is beneficial to Croydon and to us. And the way that it's written right now, the board voted, and we just re-vowdated the vote with the four of us tonight, that it's not, it's not the way that we want it written. So I know that doesn't sound good, anything else, and I, and I'm not trying to make you all not, you know, I'm not trying to give any of y'all's bad graces or anything else like that. I know that we are, because the week notice, three-day notice, it just, unfortunately, it's just the way it is. Like, I'm not going to change my mind. It doesn't sound like anyone else is. I mean, we heard the letter before we voted again tonight to reaffirm that vote, but I do think that we need to try to work together to schedule, or to create the contract that's beneficial to Croydon as well as Newport.
Can we set some dates to discuss that then?
Yes.
I think we should probably wait for Jenna, you know, I could...
Yeah, I mean, we can, like, when are y'all available? If you have dates...
This is pretty important, so, you have a right to...
I think we should wait for Jenna.
Yeah, well, Jenna's out of town on vacation right now, that's why she's not here. But, I mean, I'm generally available and I'm on that. I've gone for a week.
When is your next regular meeting?
July...
13.
Oh, November 16.
13.
The website says July 11. What day is?
Let me just check. I thought it was July 13, but...
The 13th is a Thursday.
So it should be our, our meetings are on Thursdays, so... It should be on July 11.
I don't care when it is, I'll, I'll be available.
That's what two weeks in a day.
Oh, we don't want to wait, no?
Well, that's when, that's when our board meeting is, but I can meet with y'all.
Making decisions about where they're going to go to school next year, and we can't, you know, they, they need to know. I mean, it's important for you also, because you're looking at a loss of revenue. I have three fifth graders about to start, who we think were going, I don't know what their parents have decided, who we thought were coming here, but this, I don't know how this affects their parents and their family's decision, and if they decide to go someplace else, that's $60,000 out of your budget. So, I mean, this is not... This is not a small thing for either of us.
And Jenna returns, do you know when she is back?
Uh, not off the top of my head, and I don't have my school email in front of me. I don't think we had to have a board meeting before.
No, well, no, I think that as a board, you probably need to discuss what you're, what you would like to see in a contract with them before you meet with them to see what they meet, but I don't think that you need to have a full board. I think maybe when you meet with them, you can, because it'll be, it'll be easier, because every time we have a board, that our whole boards get together, we have to post it. And then I think that if we just have, like we were before, maybe you and Jenna or you and whoever, and then two of them, that it's flexible, it's more flexible, when you guys can meet. You can meet as often as you want, you can meet three times in one week if you want to do that to get it done, but if you have the whole board, then it has to be...
My, my guess is right now that our, the whole board would want to meet, so we will warn those meetings, even if it's three in a week, because I don't know, if even two of my people show up, I've got to form, so that's a problem for us.
Oh, that's true, that's true.
So we have to warn, we have to warn pretty much everything we do.
Mr. Spoh.
Just a statement, we were very cognizant of the tuition.
I think you should try and meet with Jenna before our next bachelor year, and then we can actually talk about it as a board meeting.
Yeah, that's true.
And then that puts on that instinct, I guess, like, next week or something, and then you can bring it back, just like, anyways, with any committee, you can bring it back to the board to discuss contracts, discuss non-public, but... And then you bring it back, just like many ways, with any committee, you can bring it back to the board to discuss contracts, discuss non-public, but so let me do that first and then come, whatever. Let's see.
We'll have to see with Jenna, I don't think
Well, no
I hate to get on my phone, but I think that I may have Jenna's email, so I apologize for getting on my phone, I don't like to get on my phone in the middle of a meeting.
I'm just looking at the dates for
To see if she said when she's coming here.
I'll just look at my calendar, because next week's 4th of July, it's on Tuesday, I got a meeting on the 5th.
I don't know if she's gone next week, I don't, I don't
She probably is, if I recall, but I can meet on the 6th or the 7th. Yes, Ms. Fergman?
I just want to clarify, make sure I understood correctly, did I just hear that we are prepared to absorb a loss of $60,000 in revenue?
How's the board?
Even if we've added positions this year, most recently, we just added an assistant principal at the middle school, we still can afford to lose $60,000 in revenue?
It's actually more than that, if the contract is terminated and we're
Yeah, we have no idea what our other, that's just the new students coming in, I have no idea what our other students and what those families are going to do. We have, I mean, Croydon is a school-choice town, and families make decisions for their own reasons. It's always been nice and comforting, and a comfort, and a way for our families to know that Newport was our school of record, and there was such a long history between the two districts that, I think that's why partly for the community is such a shock. But it also, how it affects families and their decisions, I would think that our kids at high school, that they would want to finish, but whether more other kids will come or not, I have no idea, because there were ties around sports and families and tradition and all of that, and it wasn't that we were simply a business deal. It was more than that, so I mean, I've only been there four years
From the board's perspective, though, like, we don't know if the kids are coming, you know what I mean, like, it doesn't they cannot come to Newport, so just as easily as we could, we could count on that, they could change their mind and go to a different school, so it's not that's why, it's not a flippant decision, Ms. Fergman, where we're like, oh, we have $60,000, that's not we talked about it, we just, I understand, yes, ma'am.
So I do, just to your point, with not renewing the contract, it's not just $60,000 in revenue that you're putting on the line, it's closer to $350,000 in revenue that's on the line right now. So just, so your community is aware of that as well, because that has an impact on the tax rate.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else?
No, you all set the video?
Yeah, so do y'all want to try to meet next week?
Yes, please.
So I have availability on Thursday and Friday, the 6th or the 7th.
I can do either of those.
Well, how about, why don't we do this, I know that y'all want to set the dates, but let's get with Jenna and let's figure out everybody's schedules, because I don't want to be the only person there
Right.
Because that's not going to be value-added to the conversation.
So our target is next Thursday or Friday?
Yes.
If she can make it, and then we'll go from there?
Yes.
Okay.
So it might bump to the 10th or 11th, like that month, the next Monday or Tuesday, just with that being the 4th of July week. I don't know.
Is there a better time?
I'll make whatever work, I think
Well, if your whole board is coming?
It's hard for me to say, I think Aaron can make anything work, so at least two of us can do pretty much anytime.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, can, can it schedule? I can make pretty much anything work in late afternoon, Steve.
Late afternoon, do you think?
Always work, yeah, I mean, the 5 o'clock time is a good time, yeah. But I don't know about Aaron, but Steve is taking the whole board for us if we negotiate.
I think it should be two of us, like a committee.
You and Jenna.
That's who we decided, but Jenna can't make it, but I'll
Okay, who's the two? I'd like to part with it. And I'll make new dates if you don't.
Anybody got any, I mean, I don't think we need to vote on it, anybody got any objections to the two or three of us, I mean, that's good, though, because then if one of us can't make it, we're still All right, I appreciate y'all coming out and giving us your feedback. Any thing else from the board?
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?